Any discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening and will again meet in two weeks. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Health, Safety had a meeting last week and there is one item on the agenda from, that moved through our meeting from last week.
Thank you.
And we have nothing scheduled in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Properties met last week on January seventeenth. We had one item and then went to Finance and will be on a future council meeting. No further meeting scheduled, though we do need to schedule a meeting with the Cemetery Commission soon.
Thank you, Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Streets and sidewalks met this evening and no further meetings scheduled at this time.
Thank you, Water and Utilities Committee, Mrs. Parnell Kavy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have yet to meet for this year and no meetings are yet scheduled.
Thank you, Emerging Technology Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled or nothing to report.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for Finance. We have eighteen ten budget amendments, eighteen eleven expenditure over fifteen thousand to Vance's in the Police Department, eighteen twelve expenditure for general liability insurance, USI Midwest, eighteen thirteen fair housing agreement, Medina County Fair Housing, eighteen fourteen MOU for transit services, eighteen fifteen income tax ordinance update, eighteen sixteen expenditure over fifteen thousand for Sturgis construction for the parks, eighteen seventeen Spring Grove Cemetery Calibarium Wall, eighteen eighteen expenditure for winged foot tire systems for the Service Department. And for the Streets and Sidewalks Committee, we have eighteen nineteen mid-street crosswalk safety in a historic district. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bicentennial events, the Medina Library on Saturday, January thirteenth at one PM had the Founder's Program and was well attended and presented well. And then just yesterday, that's not true, Sunday, January fourteenth was the Martin Luther King Celebration at Heartland Community Church. A number of council members attended that as well as myself and Bill Hudson from the county. And again, that went well. On Thursday, February first, at seven PM, there's going to be a service at United Church of Christ Congregational called a Four Chaplain Service. That church is at two one seventy East Liberty Street in Medina. The Four Chaplains Remembrance Service is to recognize selfless service to one another within our community, within our families and within our own hearts. It's sponsored by the American Legion Post Two Oh Two. There's no tickets, there's no cost, the public's invited. The Annual ICE Festival is February sixteenth through nineteenth, that's President's Day weekend on our Medina Public Square. And then the Black History Month Celebration will be at Second Baptist Church at four five one Bronson Street. And that's Thursday, February twenty second at seven PM. Parking is permitted on the side of the church. And overflow parking has been approved at the high voltage indoor carding at the west end of Bronson Street, at the intersection of Medina and Bronson Street. And I would now like to invite up Mr. Jerry Lash for a proclamation. Most people are not here, Jerry, longer than I, but you beat me. The City of Medina proclamation and it states, whereas Jerry Lash has devoted thirty-five years of exemplary volunteer service to the City of Medina, including serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission and Airport Commission. And whereas Jerry has been involved in other community organizations, including service as an Assistant Boy Scout Leader, Feeding Medina County Volunteer and currently as a volunteer with Habitat for Humanity. And whereas Jerry is active in the First Christian Church in Wadsworth, Ohio, having ministered through the years as a church elder, deacon, Sunday School teacher, camp counselor and in countless other ways. And whereas Jerry has been a devoted spouse for forty-eight years, a wonderful father to two daughters and a very active grandfather. Now therefore I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Jerry Lash for his distinguished service to the City of Medina and highly commend him for his dedication to our community. And it's dated today with the city seal and signed by myself, Jerry. We thank you for all of your service.
Thank you very much.
Jerry, on behalf of council, I'd like to thank you for all your service to the city over the years. It was greatly appreciated. And hopefully you don't be a stranger and you still help out when you can. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. A reminder that all residents are required to file income tax returns with the city. We have switched income tax collections from CCA, which is Cleveland's Income Tax Agency, collected the tax for us for a number of years. We have switched effective January first to RITA. So all filings after January first go to RITA. I've gotten a number of questions. The most popular question right now is for fourth quarter reconciliations. And the answer is yes, you file those with RITA and they will have the information from CCA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, City Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank Jerry Lash also. I've served with him on the Airport Commission for the time that I've been here. And I also have presented a variety of hearing contested issues to Jerry in his capacity as a zoning person at the Planning Commission's Board of Appeals level. He is thoughtful. He addresses a problem with a great deal of common sense every time that he has been involved. And it's just absolutely been a privilege to work with him on the Airport Commission. And we've been fortunate to have somebody of his caliber making decisions with respect to some of the hotly contested zoning issues that we've dealt with in the times past. It's been my privilege to work under him.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank Mr. Lash for his service to the community and the city. After thirty-five years is quite remarkable. Additionally, I'd like to just give a quick update on our canine program. Three dogs have been sent over from Europe. They're currently at the trainer. We are going through a process of evaluating all three dogs to pick one. Once it has been chosen, the handler will go to the trainer for approximately a month and a half. And that will be sometime mid-February. So we're hoping by early April, we should have a certified dog on the road. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to thank Jerry for his long service. My experience with Jerry on the Planning Commission has been the last four years. And in my experience, that's probably the best four years of his time serving the community. So, thank you, Jerry.
Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item. With the expansion of our fire district here with the contract with Medina Township it triggered a reevaluation by ISO, the insurance service organization of our fire protection abilities. And I'm happy to say I got the email from them. We will remain a Class Three. Montville and Medina Township will also go up to a three. And in their non-hydrant areas, they'll go from an eight to a five. So it's an improvement all the way across the board for both the communities. And to give that some perspective for all the residents looking in, ISO evaluates over forty-eight thousand departments a year. We're in the top four thousand nationwide, so I'm pretty happy with that. Thank you.
And if you could explain the ISO means the effect?
Insurance service organization. They test our ability to fight fires and that's how they rate all your insurances.
So it should improve the insurance rates also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick updates from the rec. Medina Rec is again offering a three dollar senior day pass rate from January first through March thirty-first. So seniors come in from the cold and exercise at the rec. Of course, that doesn't include today, so it's still nice out. But then we are having an open house on Monday, February nineteenth, which is President's Day, where patrons can bring in a non-perishable food item from one to four and get into the rec for free. There will be drawings, inflatables, swimming and toddler open gym set up. And we'll also have, all the food items will be donated to the Feeding Medina County. And then lastly, our next rec advisory board meeting will be Thursday, February fifteenth at seven thirty AM at the rec center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worley Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to let the public know, we do have our seasonal maintenance positions posted on the Civil Service website at medinoh.org. Applications will be accepted either at the Civil Service Office or in the Parks Department office at seven seven five East Washington Street until the end of March, March thirtieth to be specific. And then they will be given consideration. I also wanted to express, I guess, a thank you to Park Superintendent Don LaHoughton, who will be retiring effective the end of the month. So if you see him, wish him well and thank him for his service. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. First, I'd like to congratulate Jerry on thirty-five years. That's fantastic. Also to let you know, our airport taxiway project is out to bid. That project will reconstruct the taxiway, the north-south taxiway at Medina Airport. We will be opening bids in early February and hopefully we get an acceptable one this time. Secondly, we are in the public notification process for our Champion Creek multipurpose path, which includes the State Route Three bike lanes. Stakeholders were notified here in the last week. We've gotten quite a few calls and emails. We will be responding to all of them. I appreciate folks' patience with that. But if anyone does have any question or comment about the project, please let us know. We'll be happy to share our information with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McColey, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank Mr. Lash for his dedication and commitment to the city and the community. And I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Mayoral appointment, we have one. We have an Up-Down Park Advisory Committee, Dave McCarthy, for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk please call the roll on the approval of the mayoral's appointment.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Notice of communications and petitions, there's none. Unfinished business, there's none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair and a reasonable time limit, approximately five minutes, will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Keith Racy. I live at nine zero eight Laurel Glen's Drive in the City of Medina. Some of you may know me from my dog, the Beagle Benny. You probably, if you work around the square, you've probably heard him bark. I apologize. My wife says he has her nose and my bark, but I'm not here today to bark. I'm here today on behalf of Sustainable Medina County. It's a group of Republicans and Democrats, people who are vastly different from each other. And what we have in common is that we are all breathers of fresh air, drinkers of pure water. And we like to own and live on unpoisoned land. That is what brings us together. What you may or may not know about me is I was for twenty-five years a United Methodist Minister. And I'm more or less semi-retired. For the last seven years, I've been a hospice chaplain. So that means that I'm not very much afraid of too many things. And I'm willing to talk about things that are a little bit more important than the fact that Tom Brady at forty is the quarterback for the New England Patriots, the oldest one ever to start a Super Bowl game. And perhaps he too should think about more existential concerns than starting a football game. But I'll leave that aside for someone else. My concern here is for Mother Nature. My concern is that within ten miles of the City of Medina, there is a compressor station for the Nexus Pipeline going up that will spew, how EPA tells us, seventy-seven tons of known toxins. And who knows how many tons of unknown toxins that science has not established toxicity standards for yet. We have some information here. I hope the people would pass it out. What we're concerned about is we agree with them that if you think about how big Medina County is, seventy-seven tons is nothing. But if you live next to it, it's going to be an effect on the health and well-being of your family and your children, your grandchildren and yes, even your pets. That is what we are concerned about. Science tells us that within ten mile circle of this plant, there's going to be more respiratory ailments. There's going to be more distress. There's going to be more cancers because of what's going on there. We cannot, we cannot befoul and degrade Mother Nature without befouling our own nest. As Black Elk, the Ogallisou chieftain said, what happens to the creatures of the earth happens to us as well. If you've never read Black Elk Speaks, he experienced the extinction, near extinction of the bison on the plains. And the extinction of the bison for them, that was a spiritual part of their life, left the Ogallisou with degradation that still shortens their lifespan because of suicide, alcoholism, abuse, violence and crime. He has seen, Black Elk had, that when you kill the creatures of the earth, ultimately it comes back to bite you. And that is what I am concerned about. How is this going to affect us? The county commissioners received three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we asked them to spend some of that to test airborne toxins around the compressor plant. And they have refused, saying that the Akron Air Quality Management Station will measure airborne toxins. And that is not true. That is why we have put air monitoring stations around where the compressor station is going to be. It's not operating yet. So we have a baseline already of what air toxins, airborne toxins are in the atmosphere. And when it starts operating, we'll have that data as well. What we need is, we need help raising the rest of the funds to protect the health and well-being of the citizens of Medina County. We've raised five thousand of the nineteen thousand we need to do this. That's not a lot of money, really. Some of it is our money. Three hundred dollars of it is mine. My dog didn't give anything. Go figure. So what we would say to you is you can help us. Help us, not just because it's for Mother Nature's benefit, but because it's for our benefit as citizens of this county. There are about three thousand one hundred and forty-five, if I remember right, counties or equivalents in the United States. There are four thousand deaths every year from asthma, something which will increase around that plant. Who wants to sacrifice their life? Or their child's life? Or their grandchildren's life? Or even their dog's life? So this natural gas pipeline can come through. You might say, as my son did, that while we need the natural gas, we rely upon it for our lifestyle. The truth is, it's going to Canada. It will be sold on the international market. So we have the cost of the pipeline without any benefit to us. Since eighty-six up to two thousand and twelve, ProPublica tells us four hundred people have been killed in pipeline accidents and over four thousand injured in eight billion dollars of property damage. I don't have any more current data than that. What happens to the creatures of the earth happens to us. We need to think about Mother Nature and her rights. We need to change our legal system so Mother Nature has legal standing. So that the rivers and the air and the streams upon which we rely can be protected and we can live healthy, happy lives. Not only we, but our children and our children's children. I am afraid that we have sowed the wind and we are going to reap the whirlwind. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Pat?
Mr. Coyne, President of Council. I agree with Reverend Racy, but that actually wasn't the reason why I came here tonight. But I wholeheartedly agree with Reverend Racy and Sustainable Medina County. I came to thank the City Council, the city, the mayor and all the people for the money and support for the bicentennial committee. The mayor, I was happy to see, he was talking about our events. On Sunday, we had an event where Councilman Rose was and maybe other people in this group came. We had two hundred and seventy-two people toward the courthouse. It was great. The comments were that the people of Medina really enjoyed going through the courthouse and seeing what is happening with their legal system and where the people work every day in and day out. I also want to rise and thank Roger Smalley. He's the chair of the committee. And I think he's spending every single minute of every single day doing the bicentennial committee. And I think the events would not come off without Mr. Smalley. But I also want to mention the event that's this Saturday, which is at the Medina Library, from eleven to three. It's History Day. Historical societies from around Medina County are going to have exhibits and booths. And so people can come and find out what the different societies are doing around the county. Also, another upcoming event is February tenth at the Medina Library. At one, oh, excuse me, it's not at the Medina Library. It's at the Grace Drake Center. One PM, there's a program on the Underground Railroad. The Western Reserve Historical Society is going to put on a program along with other people from our committee. So I thank council, I thank the city. And I wanted everybody to know that they could go to medinatwohundred dot com and see the events. Also, medinatwohundred on Facebook. And we also have the insert in the water bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kathy Jones. And as far as the compressor station, what Keith Racy had to say, I think you all have children, grandchildren, wives, grandparents. And they, the children, the minors, don't have any voice. And you mostly all in here live in the City of Medina. And a lot of you, I think, think you won't be affected by the air toxins from the compressor station, but you will. I know throughout the year, we passed out the ten mile radius map and the pipeline information. So I think everybody's pretty much aware of our website or the information. We were at a commissioners' meeting and like Keith said, they denied, Pat Geisman said no, that the Akron agency did air monitoring. They only do ozone. And Sam Rubens from that agency was there and he said, no, we don't test for the toxins. We don't do health analysis, which we're also getting done by Environmental Health Project in Pennsylvania. With that in mind, I'd like to know, would the City Council be willing to donate any money? Are you allowed legally to donate any money to Sustainable Medina County for the monitoring? Can, are you?
I don't know that answer yet, but I guess we could talk about it. And usually we talk about it through committees and the Finance Committee also. So I mean, if you have information you can give me, we could look at that.
I think some was passed out, but if you need more information. Because just one other thing, Commissioner Friedrich asked Lance Traves from the Labor, he spoke at the Commissioners' Office meeting too. And Commissioner Friedrich wanted to know, was EHP a nonprofit? Was EHP a Republican or Democratic group? And he said, it's a nonprofit. And Mr. Friedrich was very concerned whether it was a Republican or Democrat. Well, in this instance, they're neither. It's a nonprofit. And Republicans and Democrats and independents, we all need the air debris. That doesn't matter what you are or if you're atheist or a Catholic or whatever. So I hope everybody understands that. And with that in mind, I know you'll determine later whether you can donate. But I'd like to pass a basket around if anybody would care to donate. We'd appreciate a dollar, five dollars, whatever. We really need the money or this project won't be able to be completed. And we'll never know what's in the air to be able to prove how people are getting sick and how we can remedy the situation. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Mr. Huber?
In my capacity as a private attorney, I represented many of the people who were affected by the Nexus Pipeline. This pipeline crosses the western part of the farm that has been in my family for three generations. And as a result, caused me to become involved. The amazing discovery I made in looking at the law with respect to these pipelines is that our state and federal legislators have done little to nothing to regulate where these pipelines go in such a way that individual people aren't essentially saddled with what potentially is a dangerous situation. The regulations, by and large, were created in the early fifties that dealt with eight and ten inch lines. It didn't carry the kind of high pressure that you see in the compressor stations that they build now. Nonetheless, the pipelines have grown in size. The blast zone for a pipeline explosion with the big pipelines is a third of a mile. And that's well established. The regulations have not been improved since the fifties to provide any setback from a person's property or their house with respect to the location of these pipelines. And there has been no effort to have the energy companies put their pipelines in what would seem to be a better thought-out energy corridor. The end result is that you receive a letter in the mail and you're advised that if you don't allow these people onto your property, they're going to come onto your property anyway. And under our federal and state regulations, which essentially are very little, they are allowed to do that. And they can put these pipelines wherever they please, which essentially means that the pipeline will go in a place that is the least expensive to the energy company. So Medina City and, well, probably not Medina City so much, but Medina County residents have these pipelines installed near their homes, close to their home properties. have these pipelines installed near their homes, close to their home properties, much to the alarm of many of the people who've been affected. It would seem to me that we could do better than that. It would seem to me that our representatives politically need to look at better regulations for the placement of these pipelines. The politicians, by and large, receive great sums of money from the energy industry, and there has been no willingness to look at these issues in such a manner that a better common sense resolution of these issues is arrived at. We need to do much better than that because these pipelines need to be placed in better places than right next to your house.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. I think you hit it right on the head. I think there's always a constant struggle between progress and, and safety of the residents and the environment, and sometimes that gets lost in the efforts of trying to achieve a goal without thinking about what the ramifications of that goal will be, including, you know, the ongoing maintenance of these lines. I think that if people put them in and then they forget about, well, jeez, they might be here for fifty years. What does that mean? But you're right, I think, I think we lose sight of the, the obvious in, in view of the ultimate goal. And, and it's always been a struggle, and it will continue to be a struggle until we open our eyes and see those, those obvious pitfalls of the, of the goals we try to achieve. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to council at this time? Yes, ma'am. Yes. Name and address, please.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. My name is Mary, I'm Hoff. I am not a resident of the city of Medina, I live in Brunswick Hills. And my, my son and his wife and his two eight-month-old babies, twins, girls, live, live here. And I was concerned before. My, it isn't, I live far enough away where I have less concern than all of you. But the point I wanted to make is, what we're asking you to, to help us, to support us in, is to help pay to look, to just see if we are endangered by the compressor station. That's it. And it's a very small amount for a city or a county. And that was really my only point, is what we're doing is not anything outlandish, it's just measure what's in the air, and if there's something that needs to be done, then we can do it. If we don't, if we never look, we'll never do anything, and people will get sick. So, that's my point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Okay, thank you. Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance ten eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to solicit requests for qualifications, RFQs, requests for proposals, RFPs, for consultant services for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen City Medina Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP, and a community development block grant, CDBG, grant program applications, including administration implementation, and to award the RFQ, RFP to the successful bidder.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is to request the mayor to solicit and accept requests of qualifications and requests for proposals for consultant services to help the city manage and execute the administration of our various CHIP, our upcoming CHIP and block grant programs. This, the emergency clause is requested because we need to have this in place as soon as possible to help execute the, the grants.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the approval on the emergency clause?
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll and approve of the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance ten dash eighteen passes six zero.
Ordinance eleven eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for a one-year supply of various kinds of maintenance materials needed for the streets and water lines, including but not limited to salt, the chemicals used in the treatment of water, and water meters to be used in the various departments of the city of Medina, Ohio.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance will allow the mayor, as stated, to award contracts for maintenance materials such as concrete, stone, sand, as well as materials to repair our pipelines, water meters, and chlorine when necessary, utilized by the service department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll and approve of the ordinance?
Colosar?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance eleven dash eighteen passes six zero.
Ordinance twelve dash eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a revocable use permit with Charles Dale Novicki to use or occupy the frame shed located in the city park property known as City Lot Number Thirty-two Forty-eight, adjacent to the residence at nine sixty Roca Place.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Worley? Oh, yeah, you have no mic there. Mr. Pacoli's not trying to give it to you there.
Thank you. In May of two thousand and seventeen, our forestry department was made aware of an encroachment close to, or on park property, nine sixty Roca Place. At that time, we spoke with the resident and advised him that their shed structure was, was on city property. The resident claimed that this, that the shed was originally permitted by the city, but was not able to produce any such documents, and we did not have any record of it. So we felt, I guess, compelled to work with the resident and to permit the structure at this property until the property goes up for sale. Then at that time, the shed will be removed at the sole expense of the property owner.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Colosar?
Thank you. This, this property is in Ward Three, and I will be voting no to allow this permit for a couple of reasons. One, we had, we worked with a property owner in the same park that this, this building is in, and we made that resident remove items that they had in the park. Now we are going to allow essentially one of their, her neighbors on the other side of the park to keep their items. And, you know, to me, I think we're, we're opening the door to possible future encroachments, and I think, I feel that we need to be consistent in this, that if we've forced another property owner to remove their items from this same park, we should do the same here. And I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment?
Mr. Coyne?
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you. I will be voting for the, the ordinance, and I do agree with, with Councilman Colosar. You know, this, this may be a situation where, where we may be dealing with these situations again. The reason I will be voting for it is exactly what Mr. Worley said. Since my tenure on council, there has been a few times, that back in nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-eight, that we've had infractions before where, where either buildings or, or different objects were on city property, or the situation where there, one was, a real prominent one was a sign that didn't meet this, this, the city requirements. And both times, both these individuals that, since I've been on council, said that they did, did get approval from the city. Unfortunately, back then, records were not kept as well as they are today. So I do believe Mr. Novicki, when he said that he did approach the city and was, was told that he was, had the right to, to build his shed there or place his shed there, we have no way to prove that he was wrong. So I will be voting for it, but I, I understand and I appreciate Mr. Colosar's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll and approve of the ordinance?
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
No.
Ordinance twelve dash eighteen passes five yeas.
Ordinance, oh.
One nay.
Sorry about that.
You may go.
Thank you. Ordinance thirteen eighteen, an ordinance authorizing an expenditure of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-five cents to various vendors and contractors for the emergency transfer of water service laterals on South Prospect Street.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last, late last year, in November, I believe, council passed an ordinance authorizing the city to complete a project we consider an emergency project to transfer several residents on South Prospect Street from an old four-inch water line to our newer eight-inch line. At that time, the budgeted cost for that project was seventy-five thousand. We did complete the project, we used several vendors and contractors. The grand total is a little over forty-nine thousand dollars. We're asking for authorization to pay those vendors and contractors now, and asking for the emergency clause because the work has been done and has been done since about mid-December.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment?
Mr. President?
Mr. Colosar?
I will be abstaining on this because my employer, some of the companies that were involved in this project are customers of my employer. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll and approve of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me start over. Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Abstain.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Still yes.
Motion passes five ones, or five ones, five yeas, one abstention.
Clerk, please call the roll and the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Abstain.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen dash eighteen passes five yeas, one abstention.
Ordinance fourteen eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one two thousand and seventeen Chevrolet LC F forty-five hundred from Van Devere Chevrolet to be used in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This cab chassis and body will be used as an equipment hauler for our lawn maintenance crew in the Parks Department. It will replace a traditional pickup truck and trailer, which will help increase our efficiencies and safety for the department. The emergency clause is requested because we're hoping to secure a two thousand and seventeen model year chassis. Thank you.
Thank you, which of course is more affordable in two thousand and eighteen. We appreciate that out of you. You're always looking to save some money, and we appreciate that. Is there any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll and approve of the emergency clause?
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Clerk, please call the roll and approve of the ordinance.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance fourteen dash eighteen passes six zero.
Ordinance fifteen dash eighteen, ordinance rezoning parcel numbers oh twenty-eight nineteen B oh nine oh seventy-three and oh twenty-eight nineteen B oh nine oh forty-eight, located at one twenty-four and one twenty-six Harding Street from R-three High Density Residential to C-three General Commercial.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is, as you, as you noted in the ordinance description, it is a request by Mr. Powers, the owner of the property. At, the property is at one twenty-four and one twenty-six Harding Street. Requested to rezone from R-three to C-three zoning. This project, this request went to the Planning Commission on November ninth of two thousand and seventeen, was given a recommendation to approve that was passed to the city council and was reviewed at Finance Committee on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and Subsequently, the public hearing, city council public hearing was held on January eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and now we're reviewing it here in front of the commission, for the ordinance. Along with the Planning Commission recommendation, I did have a positive recommendation from staff recommending the rezoning as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment?
Mr. President?
Mr. Colosar?
You know, after looking over this property and we had the previous public input, you know, I, I struggle, we're, we're looking to approve two parcels here, and one of my big pet peeves is that transition from commercial to residential. And I know this property owner was affected from our forty, Route forty-two improvement, and they did lose some of their frontage. I, I, I feel personally adding one of the two parcels, the larger of the two, which butts up their, their existing commercial, I think would, myself think it would make, make, make up, if you will, for the issues they had with the, the improvement of Route forty-two. The smaller parcel, which does butt up to other residential, I do have concerns with. I'm trying to maintain that neighborhood there. I know the property owner to their east of this smaller parcel I'm speaking of has made a, looks to have made a lot of improvements, spent a lot of money on their residential property. And now we're going to extend that out to have, you know, a used car lot right next to them and possibly another building. So I do have concerns with that, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
As, as a member of the Planning Commission, Mark's very concerns were discussed at the meeting where the Planning Commission voted five-zero to change the zoning here. With the, the way the site plan is, the building, there, the additional building is going to be closer to the existing building, and the property, and the part of the lot that is going to be rezoned that is next to the residential is going to have more of the buffering that will ease that transition. So it won't look quite as bad as some people may think. There, it's, all of that was taken into consideration, and, including Mr. Lash, voted yes for this.
Any additional council comments? Will the clerk please call the roll and the adoption of the ordinance?
Colosar?
No.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance fifteen dash eighteen passes five yeas, one nay.
Ordinance sixteen dash eighteen, ordinance amending ordinance number one seventy-seven seventeen past December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, amendments to the two thousand and eighteen budget.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. For those wondering at home why we need to amend the budget already in January, the reason is that this is a contribution, the, the first line anyway is a contribution, and when we receive a contribution, we need to appropriate that in order to be able to spend it. We can't just pass it through without council's authorization. The second one is moving is a transfer from one line to another.
Thank you. Any other additional council comments? Clerk, please call the roll and adoption of the ordinance.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Ordinance sixteen dash eighteen passes six zero.
Council comments. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things. Prior to finance tonight, we had a Streets and Sidewalks meeting to discuss some installation of sidewalks where there are no sidewalks at this time in the city limits. So there is going to be a procedure in place that's going to address that. It's going to be a several-year project, but the, the, the project is going to correct some of the insufficiencies of lack of sidewalks. During that meeting, Mr. Patton gave us, our city engineer, gave us an update of, of things that's going to be taking place in the city this year as far as construction and, and road projects, street projects, sidewalk projects, storm sewer projects. And as I mentioned at the Streets and Sidewalks meeting, Mr. Patton, he does have a assistant that works with him, and he does get help from a lot of the other staff, department heads and staff throughout the city, but he always seems to have a full plate every and every year, he satisfies our needs and the administration's needs of getting things done. And my hat's off to you again, Mr. Patton, as well as the other department heads in the city. As I always, always mention, I'm just amazed at the amount of work that each of you get done with the mayor's leadership. Mr. Lash, 35 years is a long time, sir. And this city has, and residents of this city, has benefited greatly from it. Sustainable Medina County, please keep doing what you're doing. I'm sure you're going to be able to raise your funds that you need to monitor what you're requesting. I do agree with Mr. Huber. There seems to be a lack, and we all know, and especially when you get to the state and federal levy, that money talks. And not that those women and gentlemen in our states and federal legislators don't do a good job, because in most cases, they do. But this is one case from what I've read and been educated. I know every Saturday in the last year or two, there's been people at the farmer's market from Sustainable Medina County that has passed out literature. And I've always wondered, why is there not some more regulations than there is? And Mr. Huber kind of explained that very well. So please keep up what you're doing. I, as a citizen, appreciates that, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other additional council comments? Mr. Colzar?
Thank you. First off, Mr. Lash, as on behalf of Ward Three, and you are a resident of Ward Three, I do appreciate all your effort in this community. I know you're born and raised and been here all your life, and it takes people like you to keep this community going.
You gotta say it. Go ahead. He's my father-in-law. Come on.
He's been doing this long before he was my father-in-law. So I do appreciate it. Also, Sustainable Medina County, I mean, I was there when they had the discussions in reference to the compressor station out at the Cloverleaf Elementary School, and I said my two cents at that time. You know, I know we talk about progress and energy and all that good stuff, but, I mean, one of the sticking points for me, too, was not only the environmental impact, the location where they are doing it. And Mr. Huber talked about proximity to people's homes, their quality of life. But also, you know, that gas is going to Canada. And where's it going from there? It's probably going to go to Europe or Asia. And we, one of our big cheerleading moments during election time is having America self-sufficient in energy. And here we are, taking people's property rights, pulling our important natural resources from the ground and then shipping it overseas. So that does get under my skin. And lastly, I guess, along that, the Rocky River Watershed Council, who I was a past trustee of, is actually holding their annual meeting this year here in Medina. If a lot of people don't know, the city is divided by essentially a continental divide, that half the water source, or three-quarters of the drainage in our community actually goes to Lake Erie and flows out. The other quarter flows down the Mississippi. But the Rocky River Watershed looks over the health and well-being of the Rocky River Watershed, and Champion Creek, Bradway Creek, those are all tributaries that go into the west branch of the Rocky River that essentially flows in the Rocky River into Lake Erie, and then we pump that back for our own water source. So they are actually coming in this Wednesday, January 24th, at 6:00 p.m. at our district library at 210 South Broadway to talk about what they do, give you a little background on it. And they have a couple of featured speakers. One of the speakers is a professor from University of Akron. They'll be talking about bumblebees in Ohio. And then the other is a representative for Good Nature Organic Lawn, who's going to talk about healthy lawns and a healthy watershed. We hear about the algae blooms. I mean, we just had in Chippewa Lake this past year. And we, as residents, you know, you want to blame it on the farmer because they're using too many fertilizers. It's not, it's not just that.